Good afternoon. This is the March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty five. Meeting of the Oklahoma County Board of Adjustment. One thirty one P M. Notice of the meeting has been posted. March seventh, two thousand and twenty five pursuant to the Oklahoma Open Meetings Act. I'll call the meeting to order.
Yes, members of the Board of Adjustment are Ms. Jennifer Arsenal.
Present.
And Mr. Cooper Robinson.
Present.
We have the call.
All right, next on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting for February twenty seven, two thousand and twenty five. Have.
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Been so moved. I second that motion. It's been moved and seconded.
Yes, Ms. Jennifer Arsenal.
Aye.
And Mr. Robinson.
Aye. Item five on the agenda is the discussion and possible action for approval denial of a variance. V A dash twenty twenty five dash oh five to the Oklahoma County zoning regulations. Go ahead and hear from staff, please.
Yes, I'll just give, it's pretty straightforward, so I'll just give a quick review of what the applicant is asking for. This particular piece of property is on southeast forty fourth, just west of. Potawatomi Road, which is the east border of Oklahoma County. It's on the south side. In this particular area, you'll see the house that is currently there. So this property is approximately eight tenths of an acre, a little bit more than eight tenths of an acre. And so what has happened is that home, at least according to the assessor's records, has been there since the early seventies. And so the home has caught fire. And so he's wanting to replace that home with a new manufactured home. From my understanding, it's just a little bit smaller than what you see there. But basically, the property was grandfathered in basically since the seventies. And so now that this, this home has been destroyed by fire. He has to come into compliance with the current regulation. Obviously, he has a little over eight tenths of an acre, and you'll kind of see the properties that are adjacent. To them and even off the screen here are in the same predicament that he's in as far as the amount of property. And so these lots were created many, many decades ago. And so he's just put into a situation where he's trying to put the same use back as he was before. He just had to go through this process, so just because it wasn't in compliance to begin.
Ms. Arsenal, do you have any questions?
Of Mr. Brent?
Do we have plans for what would be placed there yet or proposed idea?
He hasn't submitted an application, but from my understanding, the home that was there was a double wide manufactured dwelling. And he wants to put back a single wide. So it's basically in the, in the same place, maybe a little bit further back from the road itself. So you can see that what he's asking for is not only the requirement of the two acres that we have, because it's zoned R two. And he only has a little over eight tenths of an acre, but also the front yard is setback. As you go back to the south, you'll see there even on the, on the aerial, there's a creek that's back there. I'm sure he has a water well and its septic system that's been there that he wants to continue using. So I'm sure if he moves that anywhere else on that property, there may be some conflicts, but I'll let, let him speak to that more.
You're saying the structures that are currently there shown in the photograph have actually been destroyed by fire?
Correct. That, that structure that's there, that aerial was taken towards the middle of December of last year. And so from my understanding, the fire took place shortly after that, towards the end of December, the beginning of January of this year. And so I think the applicant, from what I understand, was in the process of. Removing the structure from the property so he could put a new structure there potentially.
So you're saying there could potentially be expenses, other expenses associated with. Locating the mobile home on a different part that would be in compliance because of.
Lateral lines.
Lateral lines or things like that.
Right, my assumption is just based on the size of the lot and just some of the subdivisions that are similar in lot size. You know, one, you have that creek that's back there, so I'm sure there's a little bit of floodplain on that property towards the south. That would be one. Like I said, just so he can connect back to the services that were there in regards to the septic system. And the water well, my assumption, that would probably be the, the only location he could do that. But that's just an assumption on my part. I, I would have to refer to him for specifics.
And there are two variances, basically. There's the variance for the density. And the variance for the setback.
Correct. So the, like I said, the property itself is zoned R two. In that category, you're supposed to have a minimum of two acres. Like I said, he's got eight tenths, nine tenths of an acre. And then the setback, we require a hundred feet from the middle of a section line road. In this case, he wants to be seventy feet back from the middle of that road. Again, I can only assume that's based on the utilities that are already out there.
Okay. Hear from the applicant? Is there any other questions?
Guys, this is awesome. The whole thing just for me. I appreciate it. Yeah, excellent summary and almost all of that's correct. There was a fire. I purchased the home years ago. It was moved in new in nineteen seventy three, so prior to. As you mentioned, the, the land does slope toward the creek quite a bit. There's only so much building ground.
Sure, I'm sorry. Can you state your name and then your address?
Forgive me.
For the record?
Yes, absolutely. Richard Taylor, six one zero three South Gardner Drive, Oklahoma City, seven three one five oh.
Thank you.
So excellent summary of events. There was a fire late December. The structure has been totaled. I've also removed that from the property, cleaned that property up. I would like to go back with a newer, nicer, single wide. That seventy foot setback, we can be, we can meet that very easily and, and even a little bit more if we need to. The existing utilities are the driver for that as well. The, the septic tank mostly is the reason for it. With the well, we can, we can mess with that, but the septic tank would be a, a very higher expense to relocate. Also, as you pointed out, the point eight eight acres, everyone is in that same predicament there. So. And then also, I did get the adjacent landowner to my east. Is a real estate investor and he wrote a very nice acceptance letter of, you know, the plans that I have. I've spoken with him. To the west, there is nothing. It's vacant. To the west of that, there's an abandoned mobile home. To the north of me is just a plot of land. There's not a, a big congruence of properties around there, but that adjacent landowner next to me. Did supply a letter.
Is that in the record?
I don't have it printed. I can email it. Yeah, I have it right here. He sent it to me an hour ago.
Eric, can you take a look at that?
Certainly.
Please.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, he, he just sent it.
Yeah, so this, and we've actually been contacted by this particular, this is Rose, Yellow Rose Properties. Which is the one next to him. And we were contacted when the fire initially happened. There was some concern if it was going to be abandoned or something along that line. And shortly after they contacted us, Mr. Taylor contacted us about. Removing the home and what he needed to do to put a new home out there. So I'll have him email this to me now.
Thank you.
I'll go out and print it, but yes, this is the same property owner that is contacted. Yeah, if you'll email that to me real quick.
Ms. Arsenal, do you have any questions of Mr. Taylor?
You said you own the property how long?
Bought it in twenty seventeen. The original landowner, or I guess original property owner's parents. Then inherit, you know, the, the daughter inherited it. She let her nephew live there. He wasn't following all the laws. She moved him out. It was abandoned for quite some time, and I purchased it from her.
You're on well, septic propane?
All complete electric. Yes, ma'am.
Is this a rental property for you, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir.
Have you got an estimate of what it would cost to move the septic system?
No, I haven't. I know that traditional aerobic systems are ten to eleven thousand. Lateral systems, which I think this would perk based on the soil, is probably five to six. Other estimates from other projects or.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
Eric, I've got a couple of questions. What is the hundred foot red line represent?
So that's our setback according to the R two regulation. So again, this property, even though it's, it's non-conforming in the, in the sense of the word. That hundred foot is from the middle of the road back is our typical setback.
What was the seventy foot setback? What's that represent?
That's what he wants to go to.
Okay.
Which previous to that, it looks like he was probably closer to like a forty foot setback.
Right, and he was probably just outside the right of way. Just based on the picture, more likely, if I had to take a guess, it's probably fifty feet back. From the middle of the road, if I had to guess. I mean, the area itself, just to kind of give you a little bit more background, like you stated, is, for the most part, is, is pretty rural. And there's also an anomaly at the same time. If you go back to the west. On the north side of the road, you get into the city limits of Hara. And there's actually a pretty dense subdivision that's under development now. It would be at the corner of Hara Road and forty fourth at the northeast corner. So he's, he's further east. He's actually closer to Potawatomi Road, which, like I stated, is the county line. So once you kind of get east that little area of Hara there, it gets more rural.
When the county adopted the, the two acre R two. And the hundred foot minimum front yard setback. What was there, was there a plan or a policy regarding transition?
So it's, it's one of those things that we take case by case. You know, some people can meet that setback, some people can't. Really, the whole point of the setback is for. The rural feel of the community to keep that feel, but even more than that is for firefighting purposes. So if you get into, and even this area to some degree, a lot of these fire departments are voluntary. And so the setback of the hundred foot from the road is for firefighting purpose, but also expansion of county roads. Most of the right of way that we have on county roads are thirty three feet on both sides of the road. So if we ever wanted to come through there. Let's say that the home stayed exactly where it is and this event never occurred. If we ever wanted to go through there and forelane that road. There is a potential, depending on the drainage in that area, that we may have to buy that structure from. Because it would just be a complete take of this property for the project to work just based on how close that creek is. Now, oddly enough, the county is looking, if you go further west and you follow this creek back to the west. The county is looking at. A multi-bridge project here now. I don't think it would come this far east. I don't think it would affect him, but it's a, it's a multi-bridge project to deal with the floodplain issue here. Mostly because of the development that's going on in Hara. That subdivision I mentioned, obviously with all those homes, additional asphalt and whatnot that's going to be run off from the development. Comes back along this creek, and so the county is looking at a bridge project there now. But typically, the, the hundred foot is more for future road expansion. The twenty five feet that we see on each side of property is more for firefighting, so it's a combination of those. I mean, this, this, this instance or this type of. Oh, occurrence that comes up as far as these, it's really just older pieces of property. You know, before the county really had any regulations, so obviously, in his case, it's been out there since the seventies. I mean, this property, as far as the size, has probably been out there longer than that even. So we just have these odd occurrences in the county where you'll have somebody who split up a piece of property. County really never had any enforcement, never had any concern about it. You got to remember, back in the seventies, we don't have what we have now in regards to enforcement. You know, just the technology to kind of keep an eye on all this stuff. And so you just, you have a common occurrence of this in, in some areas of the county.
Mr. Taylor, can you come back to the podium, please? So how far are you willing to go back?
As much as you require me to. There is, it's hard to see in that picture. One of the trees, there's two trees on the backside of that double wide. One of them burned and it was no longer safe. I took it down so that it didn't fall on anybody or a structure. On the, directly behind the double wide, the one to the west is a mammoth of a tree. I mean, it's a, it's a hundred foot, fifty year old, you know, beautiful tree. I can continue to meet that hundred foot setback or get very close to it without taking that tree down. I was trying to create a little bit of a buffer. To not have to take that tree. Is what it is. The other part of it, because the land slopes, prior to my purchase, it's flat. You know, that first fifty, seventy feet. And then it terraces down, and then it's got another flat, and then it terraces down to the creek for drainage. Substantial dirt work and the. The, the septic system would need to be reconfigured if we go past a hundred. But, but the driver is a little bit of distance off that tree and being able to utilize that, that big, big tree. Being, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Being a single wide, again, newer, nicer, thinner, but longer. You know, it's, it's more of. The backside of that double wide is what I'm asking for, the, the front face of the single wide being the backside of that. But there is some grace there if, if we need it, no problem.
I would just like to see you get as close to the hundred foot setback as possible.
Absolutely.
Without, you know, having to worry about the tree. Okay, so could we, can we, Eric, are we capable of setting something like that?
Sure. So typically what happens is you would want to come to an agreeance on what that is. So if, if you want, if he's in agreeance with ninety feet as an example. And you guys are good with ninety feet, and we would just, during your vote, if your vote is to approve it. Just mention that in your vote of approval of, we're agreeing to ninety feet instead of seventy, so it's as a record.
And. That would be shown in the building permit as well, right? You'd want that distance off and, you know, setbacks and so on and so forth, so it'd be record. I. I've walked it off and I've Google Earth it off, and I can get eighty five, ninety, pretty close, the, the, without taking the tree. It's just the back doors on the tree at a hundred.
Sure.
So.
We have a motion.
I make a motion to amend the variance request to an eighty five foot setback. And approve the variance request for the R two point eight acres.
Second?
Okay, Ms. Arsenal.
Aye.
And Mr. Robinson.
Aye. All right, so. So item six, is there any new business? Is there any new business before the board?
Yes, sir.
See none? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
You do.
Second?
Ms. Arsenal?
Aye.
And Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
We adjourn.
The law puts you bill.
Yeah. Yeah.